Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Gothstown Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting of July, what's the date today, 7?
7.
If you wouldn't mind joining me, stand please and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a little bit of business before we actually get started. This is a public hearing in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04. The zoning board of adjustment is utilizing the emergency meeting provisions of RSA 91A to conduct meetings through electronic means while preserving, to the extent feasible, the public's right to notice of such meetings and ability to observe and listen contemporaneously. Tonight, you can listen contemporaneously on the telephone by calling 603-766-5646. Again, that's 766-5646. Once you call in, you'll need to enter the participation code 785-645, followed by the pound sign. So please make sure you do enter that pound sign after the numbers to participate. And if you're having difficulty calling into the number to participate, call 603-660-5000 for assistance. And we're going to say something, a little bit more protocol about that in just a second, just to make sure we have everything on the record. As Chair of the Gothstown Zoning Board of Adjustment, due to the COVID-19 outbreak, in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. The ZBA is utilizing a telephone conference line for the electronic meeting. The public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, to participate in this meeting by dialing 603-766-5646 and using the participation code 785-645, followed by the pound sign. We are providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. The town previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using the available telephone number with the posted agenda. We are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body, for the public to alert during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem with telephone access, please call 603-660-5000. We will adjourn the meeting if the public's unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we'll adjourn it and have it rescheduled at that time. All votes that are taken during this meeting will be done by roll call vote. Each member will introduce themselves or say their name as they cast their vote. And as we introduce the board in just a couple of minutes, I'm going to ask that each member also state, each member who is participating remotely, that is, to please state if there was anyone else in the room with them during the meeting. That's a requirement under the right to know law. And we'll do that in just a minute. The ZBA meeting instructions. We're a board of, an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, we do have our five members, but we don't have any alternates. So if there is anyone out there who is interested in being an alternate on the zoning board, please contact Nancy Larson in Town Hall for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting and tends to follow the items in order. The board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from the applicants, abutters and affected parties, and to ask questions. The public hearing will then be closed, and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. Those who do want to make public comment may do so, and they first must state their name and address for the record. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny or continue to a later meeting. You're welcome to watch the deliberations this evening on GTV or Facebook, or you can contact Nancy Larson at Town Hall to get the results. For any motion made, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members for that motion to prevail. An applicant can request a continuance if there's not a full five-member board to act on an application. And if you are aggrieved by a decision made by the ZBA tonight, you have the right to appeal to the Superior Court. However, before appealing to the Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within 30 days of the decision, and it must state all reasons why the decision was unlawful or unreasonable. And failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to Superior Court. And the board is going to introduce themselves. We'll start here at Town Hall first, and we have, we'll start with Nancy. I'm sorry.
Nancy Larson, zoning code enforcement officer.
Leonard Stewart, Vice Chairman.
I'm Gail LeBruck. I'm the chairman, and I'm also the recording secretary.
Denise Langley, member.
And remotely, we have...
Sam, are you still there?
Sandra Parker, member.
Thank you.
Sandra Parker, member.
Thanks, Sam. And Alan's still not on?
Alan's still not on.
Okay, so we have four members tonight. So any of our applicants need to know that for any motion to prevail, whether it's a motion to approve or deny, it needs at least three in favor of whatever that motion is, or else it's basically a non-motion. So that's something to keep in mind when it's your turn. You have the option, if you'd like, to continue it to another meeting. The first thing on the agenda tonight is to address the minutes to the meeting of June 2nd, and I'm going to entertain a motion for approval or amendments.
Participants unmuted.
Sorry.
I motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Denise has made a motion, and Len has seconded the motion to approve the minutes. All in favor, we'll take a vote here.
Aye.
Leonard Stewart, aye.
Sandra Parker?
Aye.
And Gail LeBruck, aye. So the motion carries four to zero. Minutes are approved. Okay, the first application on the agenda is one that was continued from last week, or last month. J.E. Belangelo Land Surveying PLLC. Applicant Wade and Kayla Nalt owners seek a variance to construct an attached garage 3.7 feet from the side property line, whereas 25 feet is the minimum required. This concerns Section 4.3 Table of Dimensional Regulations of the Gothstown Zoning Ordinance. The property is located at 625 Blackbrook Road, MAP 11, Lot 18-2, at Zoned Agricultural, and it was continued from last month. And I do want to explain that this was continued last month because we had the issue of not having a full board, and we had, we did not have a vote of three for any of the motions that were made. So it was kind of an automatic thing to continue them till this week so that we would have a more full board. We don't have a full board now, so the question is, what do you folks want to do with your application?
I think we'd like to try and go through it tonight, and if it doesn't work out, then we'll continue again, I guess.
Okay. Now, you realize that if we get three that deny, not having a full board still makes that vote a valid vote, and that's not a reason for an appeal?
I think we're okay.
Or a request for rehearing. You're okay?
We'll take a chance sometime.
You want to go forward? Okay. Sandra?
Yes?
Did you review the minutes to, well, you must have, because you voted on them?
Yes.
And especially to this application?
I'm ready to do it.
Okay, because I...
I'm sorry. I missed that last bit. But just so you know, I have reviewed the minutes. I did see where there was a two-to-one vote, and it looked like Alan was not for this, so we had to put it to this week.
Okay. Where you guys have both reviewed the application, I don't think we need to start from scratch. We'll maybe let them give a summary, and then if there are any questions, we can go from there so that they don't have to go through everything all over again, unless they want to.
No, I think that would be good. In fact, I'd like to answer a couple of questions the board had from last time.
Okay. Well, why don't you come up there and have a seat? Whoever's going to do the talking?
I'm Dave Nalt.
Okay.
I'm providing the building materials and helping them with the construction of their You guys, Leonard had a question, I think, of the distance between the closest neighbor's house to the right of their house. That distance is about 165 or 70 feet to where that new addition will be, and that's all pretty much fully treed. I think the neighbor has maybe 15 or 20 feet of lawn, and the rest is trees all the way to their property.
Okay. Now, that's from the garage to their house?
That's right.
Okay.
And I checked, all the abutters do have two-stall garages on, all around them, even across the street.
Okay.
That was another question. During our proposal last time, one of the biggest things was looking at the 28 feet we requested and looking at Leonard's option of reducing it down to 24 feet, and we said we were okay with that as long as, you know, as long as we could do at least a two-car. The one-stall car garage didn't really work. I want to make sure that everybody realizes the note on there, that the reason for them coming to the ZBA is the closeness, but also there's ledge on three sides, the other three sides of the house. There's septics in the front yard, and there're wells in the backs. There's not really any other options, so the ledge is a real hardship on this case, which I know you have to meet. But I wanted to show these two plans, and the reason I did is, we have two full-size vehicles. Here's the existence entry into the house. They're hoping to make a boot room here in the back as well. Coming in with full-size vehicles, you have to have a certain size garage door in order not to have to fold the, in order not to have to fold the wheels down. So I did this 24-foot plan, and you can see that with the two full-size vehicles, either you'd have to try and kitty-corner them or remove the stairs. So I guess I'd like to go through with the members that we have tonight and see if they'd be willing to go with this proposal, only because the vehicles fit better. It's a more usable garage for them at the 28 feet. And if that doesn't work, instead of leaving it, I let the board amend it to the 24 feet.
Now, you said something about the wheels down?
I might have said wheels, I meant the mirrors.
Oh.
The mirrors are old. It's a special kind of vehicle.
If you, if you don't have a vehicle where the mirrors fold in automatically, you have to have a 10-foot garage door to get in.
Okay.
You know, it's one thing if you have the automatic ones, but stopping to fold your mirrors and get out of the vehicle is, you know, the driver's side's not too bad, but the other side doesn't really work, so. They've got four young boys, they've got a Tahoe and a full-size pickup truck that they'd like to put in there. So we originally considered a 24-foot wide garage, and then Wade called me back and said, you know, realistically, to get in there properly, we should have the 28 feet. So that's what we came, we figured we'd come with worst-case scenario, but we would rather leave tonight with an approval for one of the two, so.
Does the garage have those poles in between the two bays?
No.
Okay.
We've clear-spanned it with a beam that's on that design that you see on the side elevation there.
Madam Chair, the applicant submitted, I can't read from here, but my guess is it's the same plan as what's posted, 28-foot wide garage. I could pass this around?
That would be nice.
I can also make a couple of copies for you folks upstairs?
That's not necessary for me, I can see.
I can kind of sympathize, because my garage, I don't know its dimensions, but I have a van I have to park, and it's got poles, and it's a tight squeeze to get out of it.
Yeah, with the poles in the way?
It's very tight squeeze, so.
And it is, it's very common. That's how we used to build them, with the poles in the center, and, you know, the more we've done them, and people have these larger cars with these doors now, we try and get away from that.
Yeah.
We can't physically fit in the smaller cars.
And you are, your name?
Kayla Nalt.
They don't make small pickup trucks anymore, anyway.
We need taxis.
Extra kids aren't part of the variant, so.
Yeah, it's not a hardship.
Financial hardship.
Well, yeah, it's a hardship, but not one here. I'm all set. I have a good deal with us, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else that you want to add?
No, I think those are the only questions the board really had from us. I wanted to make sure we went over the ledge for the new members here. The buffer is pretty sufficient there. It's really, from house to house, fully treed. And then I just wanted to show that plan, showing the vehicles inside there. I had it redrawn to, you know, give a good visual of it.
Denise, do you have any questions?
I don't.
You weren't here last one.
I don't right now.
Okay. Sam, do you have any questions of the applicant?
No, I was trying to see the property today, and I can see why they have issues.
Okay.
Can Sam see the drawings by chance, sir?
Not unless she's watching. Can you see the drawings that are put up, Sam? Are you watching GTV at the same time?
No, I'm not watching the GTV. I have my pictures, as like I said, I was by there today, so I saw this, how it was spaked out on the property, and I did see how, you know, they have the legs in the front, they have the back legs, and the way the house is situated really does make it very hard to put it in any other place.
Okay. All right, questions?
No, my...
And, you know...
Go ahead, Sam.
No, I was just saying, I mean, looking at this through 24 feet versus 28 feet, it's minute in my eyes. So I truly, I don't know how we would end up having guide them into anything. It would have to be something they would bring forward, what you spoke about before, and now we just have to think about what the merits on that point.
Okay. Len, do you have any questions?
Questions that I had earlier were addressed.
Okay, and I don't have any questions. I guess we will open the hearing to the public. Is there any public on the line that would like to make comment on this application?
I have, I have a number, call in with the last four digits, 5023. Can you identify yourself?
You're in the chat room, sorry. You're in that by yourself? We're waiting for the Morrisons.
The, okay, all right. Thank you very much. That will be coming up fairly shortly. I'm going to go ahead and mute you again, okay?
Good thing.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so there's no other public that has...
No other public.
All right, then with no public comment, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we are going to deliberate on this application.
So interesting enough, when this first came up, like, 4.7 feet, whoa.
Yes.
So I did, you know, I read the minutes, and I know the location, and they really don't have a choice. The abutter doesn't have an issue with it?
Yeah.
24 feet or 28 feet, I'm fine with the 28 feet. I think at 24 feet, there's either going to be banged-up walls, exterior walls, or they're not going to park in it. I mean, eventually, it's just not going to work. So I say, I have no issue with the 28 foot.
Okay.
And likewise, I don't have any issue with the 24 feet was offered the last time. It's kind of a compromise.
And I appreciate that. It was a good idea.
Due to the discussion to see if we could do something with it, but like Denise, I have no problem with the 28 feet.
And I appreciate that they did the exercise.
Yes, I do appreciate that a lot. And I know for me, initially, when I saw the distance, I was, that was just 3.7 feet, that just kind of, kind of made me, things flash a little bit, but it was the ledge that is a true hardship. Your house is surrounded by the ledge, so there's really no other choice for you to be able to do something different. So I don't have a problem with it. Do we have a motion then? Are we ready for a motion? Do we need more discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To grant the applicant a variance to construct a garage 3.7 feet from the side property line, whereas 25 feet is the minimum required, and this would include the 28-foot garage as discussed.
The 28 as presented?
As presented.
28 feet.
And I will second.
Okay. All right, so we have the motion from Denise, and the second from Len to approve this application as presented with a 28-foot wide garage.
A border heard from.
And so we are going to take a roll call vote. We'll start with Sam. Your vote?
Well, Lucy and I vote positively on this one.
Okay. Hi, Lucy.
Denise?
Yes.
Len?
Yes.
And I say yes, you have your variance four to zero to zero.
That was pretty painless tonight.
Thank you for coming back.
Thank you.
Did you want these in the record? Okay with me?
I think we've got, we've got this one, so that should be good.
Dave, you said there was a revised one on the bottom there?
On the bottom.
That's the 24.
It just shows the cars in it.
Okay.
Same plan with cars.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll just grab that.
Okay, the bottom one, it's a smaller one. So give it the top one?
Yes. You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Dave.
Have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Oh, we just got wiped out.
Okay, our next application is, the applicants are calling in remotely, I understand. Jamie and Richard Morse, applicants' owners, are seeking a variance to place a shed 10, to place a 10-by-12-foot shed within one foot of the side property boundary, whereas 10 feet is required for an accessory building with a building footprint 600 square feet or less. This concerns Section 5.1.1 Accessory Buildings of the Gothstown Zoning Ordinance, and the property is located at 79 New Boston Road, MAP 33, Lot 13, Zoned Residential 1. Do we have a representative on the line for this application?
Jamie Morse was on the line. I'll have to call her and see...
What happened?
Yes, and I'll have to run up to my office because my phone is out in the car.
You want to use mine?
Oh, sure, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
I'll wear my mask. Oh, hi, Jamie, I was just going to call you. We lost you for a minute there.
I know, I wish I hit the unmute button, and I got disconnected.
That's perfectly understandable.
So you have on the line tonight?
What's that?
Not my husband, he's, but you have me on the line tonight, but not my husband, he's in the middle of doing some paperwork.
Okay, not a problem. I saw that you were, you were going to be dialing in, so how are you today?
I'm doing well, how are you?
I'm doing well, thanks.
Okay, so Jamie, do you want to tell us about your application?
So I'm asking for a variance for the sideline of my property, and so a 10-by-12 shed, not 10-by-20 like the paper says.
Yeah, we revised that, so it's, I guess I'd say that.
I just wanted to let anybody else know who called in, so just in case they're scared I'm going to go, but I'm broad, I'm really not. So it'll be like on the side of my property, saying, like, the Bob Road area, so it's like more of like the neighbors that I don't have anymore that live on Bob Road, it'll be facing their house within like maybe one, one to one and a half feet from the property line, because it'll be like a, maybe like a foot from my fence, which I think is like a half a foot from the property line.
Okay.
I mean, it's over 72 feet from the sidewalk on New Boston Road, and it's over 30 feet from the back area where they said that there was a pipe, like some sort of piping that's back there, like water pipes or something.
Uh-huh.
There was an, Jamie, this is Nancy. When I spoke to your husband a couple of weeks ago, I had forwarded him a copy of the latest plan we have, is a lot line adjustment plan, and it shows an iron pipe at that rear corner, and you can actually see it from the street. So I had at least... So, I had, um, at least, uh, Google Street View for that particular year. I didn't have access to my vehicle, so I relied on Google Street View, and I think he said he was able to find that, and I believe some other monuments on the property.
Yes, we were, and then I also had my neighbor that lives behind me on Bog Road, Jimmy, I don't remember his last name, but I had him come over and see like where, like where I would put the shed, because I'm not gonna put it like on the back of my property or next to like his garage or near the Coughlin's house. It was more to be closer to the side of my house, um, just to store my, my, um, equipment and lawn furniture, and so it wouldn't even have power or anything to it. It's just to store equipment and.
Now, is, Nancy, is this the application that we got a, cause I don't, I'm not finding it in my paperwork here. We got a, a letter from an abutter who had no problem with it?
Uh, there is. Um, I do remember seeing a letter from an abutter. I don't recall if this is the one. Let me check if it's not attached to my.
I'm pretty sure it was the one on, I wanna say it was New Boston Road, but, yeah, I think, I think you're right.
Let's see, towards the end. Yeah, I don't have it attached to mine either, but I did come across it, uh, this afternoon, so pull that out.
Letter, yeah. Letter from an abutter at 79.
Okay, I'm gonna read the letter from the abutter, um, is it here?
PDF attached, let me.
Is it right here? Did you open it by Adobe?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna read the letter from the abutter who stated, um, this is regarding the ZBA notification of June 23rd, 2020, Jamie and Richard Morse variance. After receiving the notification, I met with Jamie to discuss her plans for installing a 10-foot by 12-foot shed. This will be placed along the fence on the left side of the backyard. Please let it be know that as an abutter, I have no obje, objections to their plan, and it is signed from James Chekharoff.
Oh, get the note, Jimmy laughing.
Okay, so we have that. Um, before we go any further, I would like to entertain a motion from the board regarding regional impact.
I'll move no regional impact.
Second.
Len made the motion for regional impact and Denise seconded it. We're gonna take a roll call vote. Sandra?
No regional impact.
Okay, Denise?
No regional impact.
Len?
No regional impact.
And, uh, me as well, so no regional impact, uh, four to zero. All right, now we can resume. If you want to tell us any more about your application, Jamie?
Nope, I think I told you everything I needed to buy, plus I think you guys have a picture of like what the look of the shed would look like and where it would be placed inside your package.
Yep. Okay, in, in your.
It won't be an eyeful, I promise. It will be really pretty.
Okay, um, in your, in your application, there is, uh, for the variance, there were some criteria, some questions you had to answer. Do you have those with you so that we can get those into the record, or would you prefer I read them into the record myself?
Can you, can you read them? Because I don't have a copy of it.
Oh, that's fine. This is those five questions about how you meet the variance criteria. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because it will be a prefab shed. I will not bother any neighbors for having it in the backyard. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because I'll be within one foot of my property line. The variance calls for 10 feet. If I place it 10 feet from my part, from any part of my property line, it will be in the middle of my backyard. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because it will allow for us to have storage for our lawn maintenance equipment and our lawn furniture. Values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished because it will not decrease the value of the property or those around it. Regarding hardship and special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessarily hardship. And you said it will not decrease property values, and you said the use is a proposed, uh, the proposed use is a reasonable one because it will only be used for storage and no electrical will be installed in it. Is there anything you'd like to add to those comments?
No, I think, I think that's everything. I hope I answered those questions correctly. It's the first time I've ever pulled up those papers before.
Yeah, that's okay. We, we, we encountered that often.
Okay.
She has hardship, which that's not a hardship, but she has it somewhere else. She has it on, um, the number two. If I place a 10 feet, P V, from my, okay, so that's.
We can, yeah, we don't have to.
Clarifying that.
Yeah, we don't have to, we don't have to take this.
You're saying the hardship would be as if I didn't get the variance, my shed would be in the middle of my yard?
Yes.
The, the size of your lot.
I agree with that. I, I don't have a very big yard. It's only like, it's less than a half. It's like 0.4 something.
Okay.
Well, it leads me to my, this is Len Stewart. My question is, why, why particularly are you putting it right in the middle of your fence line there? Right, he going by the aerial here that is kinda near to the neighbor's buildings on the other side of the fence? A, is that their residence, or is that a garage? And B, couldn't you place it a little further toward the back of the property without getting out into the middle of the yard?
So, if the building that's next to my fence is their neighbor's garage, they used to have a shed like right next to it too, and I didn't really care, so that part didn't bother me. Um, the other thing is if I put it any further back into the yard, then I'll be within a certain amount of distance from that pipe.
So, yeah, I, I can clarify the, um, they had originally shown a sketch with that shed closer to, uh, so farther into the backyard, closer to Bog Road, but this lot has two frontages. It has frontage on Bog Road and has frontage on New Boston Road, so they have two front yard setbacks that they had, have to adhere by, adhere by. And the shed, uh, no matter what size is, can't be located in that front, front yard setback, which is 35 feet. So, measuring back from that corner pin, which was located, um, along at the corner of, of Bog Road.
Yeah, down here.
And the, yeah.
Okay, understood now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Does anybody have any, Denise, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Um, the, who does the fence belong to?
Which fence? The brown fence? That's mine.
Okay.
I had to replace it because my other one fell down.
So, that, the fence goes right between you and the neighbor where you put in the shed?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Sam, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time.
Okay, I don't have any further questions. Are we ready for public comment? Okay, then I'm gonna close the, I mean, I'm gonna open the hearing to the public for comment if there is anybody there. Please remember to dial pound, pound that, star nine.
Star nine.
Star nine. Pound nine. I always forget these things.
It is, uh.
Star nine, according to the minutes at least.
You can call in and enter the participation code, um, and the call in number is seven, area code 603-766-5646. Once you will call in, you will need to enter the participation code, which is 785-645, followed by the pound sign.
And if they want to speak, they need to dial star nine to raise their hand and be recognized.
And if they want to speak, then they, yes.
That's what you told me last month.
Star nine to raise their hand.
That's what you told me last month, so that's what I was reading from.
In my cheat notes here.
Yes, okay, so this is open to the public. Is there any member of the public online, Nancy, that would like to comment?
Uh, my computer just went to sleep, so.
Wake it up.
Wake it up. No, uh, there is only, oops, I'm sorry. This is, uh, more, so, yes, there is one, uh, member of the public that would like to, um, speak if, if it's time for that.
Yeah, bring them on.
Okay. Hello, uh, I'm calling to the, the number of the last four digits of 5023. You wanna speak, you, you wanna speak, uh, with respect to the Morse application? This is your time now to offer any, uh, comments for or against, or just ask questions. Can you hear me okay?
Is she muted?
Mm-mm, let me double check.
Hello?
Oh, sorry, I had you muted by mistake. I forgot to unmute you. Okay, so I don't know if you, if you heard anything that I said.
I, I did.
Okay, okay, great. So, um, could you just identify yourself for the record?
It's Kathy Coughlin and, um, Margaret Coughlin, 83 New Boston Road. Um, we, um, we just are in support, um, or don't have any objections to the shed. The Morse's backyard is super small and irregular because of the roads on both sides. Uh, and it's completely fenced and, and we're fully in support of their application.
Well, thank you for calling in. That's very nice of you, very kind.
Sorry I muted you.
Don't worry, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else that is on the line, Nancy?
Uh, there is no one else on the line, um, except one other applicant.
Okay, then I am, uh, Jamie, do you have anything else you want to add before the board goes into deliberations?
Oh, I just wanna thank the Coughlins for calling in and thank you to Jimmy for those kind words in his letter, and thank you for your consideration.
Okay, then I'm gonna close the public hearing and the board is going to enter deliberations on this application. Board, comments or?
If you're ready, I'll just offer a motion that the variance be approved as, as that I think the fact I didn't realize that we're dealing with a double setback situation does pose a definite difficulty for them, so.
It sure does.
Approve as requested.
I second. Denise?
Okay, so we have the motion to approve the application from Len, and we have the second from Denise, and we're gonna take a roll call vote. Sam?
Yes.
Okay, Denise?
Yes.
Len?
Yes.
And I say yes, so the motion carries four to zero. You have your variance to put your shed where you'd like.
As presented.
Yes, as presented. I stand corrected. You have, you have, are you there, Jamie?
Jamie, are you still here?
I'm here, I just hear, I'm still here. I just hear a lot of feedback.
Yeah, let me, um. Hold on just a second. Let me, uh, make sure that I, um, mute that. Hold on.
Oh, there we go. I can hear it better.
Is that better? Okay.
Okay, Jamie, you have your variance. It's been granted to put your shed, 10 feet by 12 feet shed, um, as you presented in your application and as we discussed it here tonight.
Thank you guys so much for your consideration.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jamie. Have a good night.
Thank you, you guys, you.
Thank you.
Okay, I, our next application tonight is David Skirsey, applicant owner seeking a variance to construct an eight-foot by 12-foot addition for mechanical room within approximately 14 feet from the side property line, whereas 25 feet is required, and to construct a porch deck within approximately 32, 32 feet from the property line, whereas 35 feet is required. This concerns Section 4.3, Table of Dimensional Regulations of the Gothstown zoning ordinance. The property is located at 39 Incline Ave. It's a Class 6 roadway. It's at MAP 42, Lot 13, Zoned Agricultural, and pursuant to RSA 67441, the applicant also requires select board approval for issuance of a building permit on a Class 6 road. So, first I would like to entertain a motion for, regarding regional impact.
No regional impact.
Thank you, Len.
Second.
Thank you, Denise. We have the motion from Len and the second from Denise, finding no regional impact, and we will do a roll call vote. Sam?
I hear you. No regional impact.
Okay, Denise?
No regional impact.
Len?
No regional impact.
And the same for me, so the motion carries four zero. There is no regional impact. And do we have an applicant or a representative for this application online?
David, are you still there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you just speak up a little bit, a little bit higher, louder?
Absolutely. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's much better.
Um, I'm also here with my father, Mark Skirsey.
Hi, Mark.
Hi.
Okay, what do you want to tell us about your, your variance requests? There's two of them, right?
Uh, I believe so. I'm putting in a variance for, um, an addition off the back of my, um, current house to, um, put in for mechanical, electrical, and a fire suppression system, as well as a porch on the front.
Okay. Can you tell us about the dimensions and why you need the variance?
Uh, it's gonna be a 10 by, uh, 12, 8 by 14, 8 by, what, sorry. 8 by 12, I believe, is what I put down, um, off of the back of the house to fit all the mechanical appliances, um, and the deck, um, was, uh, a little bigger than that back addition.
Okay.
It's kinda like a farmer's porch. It wraps around.
Yeah, I see.
Don't know if you guys have.
Yeah, I see eight, I see eight feet in, on one end of it and six on the other, but what's the, uh, what are the other two dimensions that are there? They're not shown. Eight feet wide and six feet, eight feet wide and six feet wide, but how long in, on each of the ends?
Uh, I, I didn't have it in front of me. Um, I believe that was, uh, almost half the length of the house. Uh, the overall house was about 32 feet long, I think. So, it was just half from the front door. Um, they, it'll stick out from the front of the house about eight feet. Yeah, there it is. Yeah, eight feet, uh, six feet, and then, I didn't have that dimension. I apologize.
I, I would like to know those dimensions.
Okay. Uh, it's another, another sheet. It's like the door.
Madam Chair? Nancy?
Uh, not longer than 14, uh, 14, 14 feet to the door, and it would just go to the side of the door. If the pictures that she has, uh, that she took, it shows the roof jumping up slightly, like a door. And that would be how far it would be going, just to the other side of the.
To the other side of the door?
Right. If you look at the roof, that, I don't know if it's big.
Where's the pictures? I don't have pictures.
On the main, on his baggage.
Touch my staff report.
So, uh, in lieu of not having a breezeway or anything, it was just something that to allow a staff cover while we're bringing in groceries or, or things like that.
Well, I get that, but there's, like I said, there's no dimensions, and in, in the description, it says, there were two, for the variances, it says approximately 14 feet and approximately 32 feet. And, um, you know, I'd like to narrow it down a little bit because approximately, for me, doesn't really cut it.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I, I have seen in my travels through this neighborhood, umpteen times, that, uh, some of the parcels do have, um, iron pins or iron pipes out, out front, um, with some orange survey flagging. So, David, have you or your dad tried to locate the monuments for this property? Did you try to do that?
We located one, the J-10 from there, and we've measured down from that, um, the line on the. The one on the corner of the Garren's property, so they would be identified, and that posed this corner line, so we measured from there down to establish our position.
Okay, which, which property are you referencing?
Okay, so across the street, you have, the Garren's have a property, and they have another small lot.
Do you know their, do you know the addresses? Is that, we have the tax map, GIS map where the address is shown.
He's stepping out for a moment to grab the map of the town.
Okay.
Yeah, I did, I thought I submitted earlier another print with more dimensions. It showed the deck on that, but...
Yeah, we have, we have a sketch from you of the property, the outline of the property, and the background is green, you have dimensions of 150 by 150 foot lot. You're showing the footprint of the existing home in gray, and then the two proposed additions in yellow with some dimensions for those additions. And approximate distance from property boundaries.
Right. The hidden, you were able to identify, was on the corner of 42-8.
Okay.
I did, I, I sent one to Catherine Fisher, on 512 of 2020. It didn't zoom in very well, like my friend Phil, it has a bunch of dimensions, and that missing dimension was 14 foot six. If you zoom in, you can, you might be able to see it, but I did send that to Catherine Fisher.
Okay.
It wasn't a very good quality. Even though, when we clarify ourselves, I apologize for that.
I have a question.
Nancy?
Mm-hmm.
What's the width of the roads up there?
Through there, I don't know what it is. And they're Class 6 roads, so they're no longer maintained by the town. They're, they're pretty, pretty narrow.
Is it still, though, the town have the right of way?
Well, it's a town, it's a town road.
It is, okay.
But the town has no, if the town begins to maintain it, and if they do it consistently for so many consecutive years, then we end up owning it again. Technically, we do own it, but there is no obligation to maintain.
Well, I, my question is, so when they measure the 38 feet from the road to the structure, is that the town right of way, or is that the edge of the road?
Well, oftentimes, people are confused, and they're usually measuring from the edge of the, of the road, not, not the edge of the right of way. It's been a long time since I've looked at the original subdivision plan for this. I ventured to guess that it's probably a 40-foot right of way, and the road width is, hmm, if it's 12 feet wide, I'd be surprised, 12, 15 feet wide.
I was just on that road today, and I can tell you, it's unpaved, it's very bumpy, and just big enough for one vehicle.
Yep.
So even if it's 20 feet, it could have, the right of way could be 10 feet into this 38. Just, you know, I'm not saying that's wrong, I'm just trying to get a grip on it, on what it is.
If you look at one of the attachments on my staff report, it's a, an old septic approval for the camp, it's across the way, that's no longer there, it's called, it's labeled as the La Chance two-bedroom house.
Oh, yes, okay.
See that one? It looks, it looks like this. It's after, after the photos, in my staff...
Yeah, I don't, but I think it's in here.
It's in the application itself.
Yeah, I remember seeing it, okay.
Yeah, it's in the application itself. So, it's right after David Skursy's sketch. So, this, you know, this is not a boundary plan, for sure, but it does show the approximate right of way with the traveled way in between. I don't know what the scale of this plan is, but...
Okay.
I...
Have they been notified?
No, I don't think they need to go to conservation. David, you haven't gone to Conservation Commission, have you? I don't...
Conservation?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure they, I mean, they, they do have Conservation Easement on Town or Land abutting your property, and the town was notified as part of the application, but I don't know as a regular course of procedure if they offer any, any comments on this type of request.
But they were notified as an abutment.
Well, the town was notified, but then, did the message get sent to the Conservation Commission, is the question? It would have been sent to Conservation Commission as well.
And they don't have any...
Yeah.
Okay.
Not at this time.
Now, I do have an issue with these dimensions not being a little more specific, a little more detailed.
How do you feel?
Well, how, how far is, how far is it from the proposed deck to Incline Ave?
Thirty, 32 feet, minus the six feet from the 38 number.
Minus the six from the 38?
What is 38 measured to the road, or is it measured to the front of your property?
Yeah, that was my next question.
We didn't measure all the way to the road itself, we came back trying to figure in the center of the road, that the road was 30 feet wide, in reality.
Okay. So that'd be 15 feet back from the center of the road.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Nancy?
There's a file, road file upstairs. I can run up there quickly and check to see if there's a road file for Incline that would give us some idea as far as the right of way went.
Okay, that would be good.
I think that's a good idea.
Should we take a five minutes?
Yeah, that would be good.
The board's going to take a five-minute recess while we try to get the, the roadmap, or the road plan for Incline Ave.[1194.06]
Thanks, everybody, for waiting. We are back. Nancy, what did you find regarding?
I pulled out all the files for Incline Avenue. A lot of them have to do with building on a Class 6 road and their maintenance agreements filed by the applicant with the Select Board. Those really don't make any references to dimensions of the travelway or the right-of-way. I did find a reference to a 20-foot width on Incline, but it didn't specify whether it's a right-of-way or it's the travelway. I would assume that it's probably travelway. The older rights-of-way tend to be, you know, 30 feet, maybe at the narrowest, often 40 feet. There are other files in there that may have an answer for us. But I don't know if it's ever been surveyed. I know individual lots have been surveyed, you know, probably just by the property owners over time. But I think, I can't say for certain, but I suspect that all we have as far as a layout, and it wouldn't even be an official layout, would be the original subdivision plan that was, you know, approved way, way long ago. And a lot of those lots have been consolidated. Not all the lots have been constructed.
This is a lot that's been consolidated from, what, like, four different lots?
A couple anyways.
Thirty-nine, forty, forty-seven, forty-eight.
So there's several different lots. One dimension that I was looking for, I was able to figure it out while you were gone, because I was looking for the dimension from the porch to Incline Ave. And that would be 36 inches, I mean, 36 feet, because from the house now to Incline Ave is 42, and then you take away the six feet of the porch, so it would make it 36 feet.
It's 38, it's 38, 38 from the corner of the house to, on the front, to Incline Avenue.
Is the house at an angle?
It looks a little bit, yeah, it's a little bit at an angle. So you take the third, you have six away from the 38, and you get the approximate 32.
Okay.
Just a matter of whether that's measuring from the travelway, as best as you can discern out there, versus the property boundary, the front property boundary.
So how do you suggest we determine that?
David, can you explain, once again, maybe using your sketch that you provided, which property corners you were able to locate? And just using, you know, top, bottom, left, right?
Okay, my part, they could explain. Yeah, may I speak? This is Mark Scherzy. So if you look at the green area, on the very right-hand side of that, we were able to identify the property marker directly across the street as pointed out by Mr. Garrett, the property owner.
Okay.
Notice the mark.
When you say "across the street," you're talking about the house that's no longer there? It fell down?
Uh-huh. The lot, the house is no longer there, where borders the house that is there.
Okay, so can I just explain how we're looking at it in our packets and how it's oriented in our packets? And then maybe we can all be on the same skit, on the same page? So we are looking at the plan, so your writing is, you know, so Incline Avenue's on the bottom, and then the top right-hand corner of that plan is a compass. And then you have, along the right-hand side of that side property boundary, a measurement of 150 feet in depth?
Right.
Okay, and then you've got the existing footprint of the house in gray, and then you have the two proposed additions in that kind of yellowish-orange. And then at the, if we just use top, bottom, left, right, at the bottom right-hand corner of the house, where you have that wraparound porch, and you have the arrow measuring 38 feet from that bottom right corner of the existing home, with an arrow pointing towards Incline Avenue, were you able to find either the front corner to the left, up against Incline, or the front corner to the right, up against Incline?
The front corner to the right, up against Incline, based on the across-street marker, which is identically positioned. The lots are even, coming off of the road, coming off of Orr Street. So the two lots are lined up, and directly across that, we were able to, we were shown, basically, by the property owner, the marker, and used that as a determination.
So the two side property lines that line up identically with your lot, or the side lot of 42-8, which is 14 Incline Avenue, that's across the street from you. I think that's maybe that old white house that was, that fell down and then was demoed? That used to, yeah, that used to have its septic system on your property. That's what we're, right, okay.
Is that 42.8-8?
Yeah, 42-8. So it's, it's, it's that, it's that front property corner directly across your front property corner that you were able to locate?
Yes.
Okay, so what we don't know for sure right now is how wide the right-of-way is.
So we tried to evolve based on those, that markers and stuff, the 30 feet, you know, as best as we could approximate, you know, the road, the path following the actual road.
I have a question. So when you found that corner, how many, how many feet was that to Incline? That's, that you can see the road?
Uh, that was about three feet off, about three, about three, oh, three feet off. So one of them, three, four, off of the path, per se.
That would be the property line.
And then on the, how about the, if you're standing on Incline, looking at your property, the property to the left, which is vacant, that's map 42, Lot 12?
Right.
Were you, so this is, this is in front of the house, down by the road. Were you able to find that property corner?
We did the best we could based on, the Garens put up a fence along the property, and we tried to keep that as the straight line to stay, you know, we're trying to do it, you know, based on their markers.
And who are the Garens, where, I'm sorry, Mark, who are the Garens? Where do they live?
The Garens own lot, sorry, here, 41-1, 41-2. They've been positioned during the, well, okay. Forty-two-9 and 42-8. Directly across from the property?
Yeah.
Okay, they have a fence there, going along with the other fence, where the line was. We used that as a straight line to try to position ourselves. We couldn't find exact, you know, anything in the ground, per se, that we could be sure.
So on the same side as your lot, were you able to find any markers at all, close to the road?
On our side of the road?
Correct. Not necessarily your lot, but on that side.
We followed down to the other corner. We didn't find a lot on the corner of Orr, either, across the street. We didn't, we, you know, we used the 30-foot measurement, you know, based on the old maps that I have, you know, to base the road and tried to be as accurate as we possibly could. You know, the Garens had a fence, so we used that as a straight line to try to make sure that we stayed in line with the roads.
You have an old map, town map?
The highest, 48, in 2004, I have your map, sheet number 48.
So you have the tax map.
The tax map show the width of the roads, the right-of-ways? Nancy?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Nancy, question?
Mark, this is Nancy. Were you able to find the rear property corner on the same side of the property where the house is located? So it would be, it would be, let's see, the southeast property corner that abuts map 42, Lot 15?
No, we weren't able to find anything up there. Then that's pretty, it was pretty thick in there. You know, we did clear out around the house, you know, the brush and stuff, but we, we did go up there and look, but we weren't, we didn't find anything resembling any markers. All on pine, all kinds of stuff. You know, and we even took measurements, so, you know, we hunted around pretty good.
Okay. Can I ask a question? This is Denise. I'd be more comfortable if you had this surveyed. I don't have an issue with the distance from your property lines, but I think that nobody's certain where your property lines are. So it's hard for us to give a variance, or, I'm sorry, it's hard for me to give you a variance if we're not certain where your property lines are, especially to the road, even though it's a Class 6.
This is Lynn Stewart. I would also agree.
I, and this is Mark Scherzy. I've lived up here for 30 something years. I own Lot 4164, the old laxen place, that all this property was needed from. And I will tell you, there aren't very many markers up here. Thank you. I understand, you know, we're trying to do the best we can with the other current landowners, the property owners, the Garens, I, the others across the street. We've talked to the other people. Constabulary, obviously, there. We've done the measurements off both sides of the streets, trying to check our measurements, and they seem to come out pretty well.
Then I would want to know for certain what the town right-of-way is, which shouldn't be very difficult to locate, at the very least. That's my opinion only.
Public works maintain right-of-way maps or any sort of records that would shed any light on it? I have the same of them as Denise. I think we're trying to make a decision based on partial information, and, you know, at minimum, we need to know where the right-of-way is to make a decision.
My understanding is that all of the road information is over in Room 210, up above us, in Town Hall. So I'm not sure if DPW will have anything, but I'll certainly reach out to them. And the other, the other comment I wanted to make is, I don't know if, and I doubt a surveyor has gone through this neighborhood anytime soon, anytime recent, but I know in my travels, walking, biking, riding through the neighborhood, I have seen several iron pins with some orange ribbing wrapped around the top. And, you know, who knows what they're marking, but they certainly appear that they're property boundaries. I don't know, you know, in modern times, they're usually capped with the name of the surveyor, or at least his license number. And you can figure out who that is just by going on the Board of Licensor. Or sometimes there's, you know, some other means of identifying who the surveyor is on the boundary monument. But, you know, you might want to try kicking around, see if you can find anything. And then I'll continue to look for some information that we may have that may assist you. I'm hoping that somebody in that area has done substantial enough work where they've decided to have their property surveyed. And it doesn't even necessarily need to result in a plan, in my opinion, but it's really up to the zoning board, where if you, if you could have the surveyor go out there and locate the monuments and take some, take some measurements for the closest distance to the property boundary from whatever structure it is, you know, the porch in the front and the side, and then the, the small addition to the rear, then that would, that would be the precise distance that the zoning board is looking for, so they can be certain that whatever variance they're going to grant is, is an accurate number. And then it will be, you know, up to the board if they want to have that in the form of a plan submitted to us, which is always preferable. But, but I will, I will continue to look through files, and hopefully I can come up with something.
Okay, may I add something? My only concern with the surveying is that after living up here myself for about 30 years plus, and people that have lived up here even longer, the terrain has changed, the roads have shifted. We go to survey things, the road's not where it originally was on these maps. I mean, how, it will affect me going forward if the road is, you know, on my front doorstep, you know, according to your plans, but it's not now, you know?
Well, if the plan, if the, if the plan, you know, in, not dealing with a plan as old as this one, but if a, if a, if the road was built in a section other than what's shown exactly on the subdivision plan, then in these days, you know, there are ways to deal with it, with either easements or the developer needs to shift the road back to where it's supposed to be built. But I'd say, let's not be concerned about that at this point. Let's just see what we have for information. And then there's always a way of addressing things. So, you know...
So, you know, we can just take it one step at a time.
And this is Denise, I'm speaking only for myself. And if the road has shifted away from your house a little, I'm not so concerned about your setback. I'm more concerned of us being accurate, in that this is accurate. When we give a variance or saying that you can place this porch a certain amount of feet from your property line, and it's just, I want that to be something that we know. You know, you look around, there's people right on their property line, looks, you know, even a little over their property line like people did in the day. So I don't have an issue with it, personally.
No, and I, this is one, Stuart. I don't see a big problem with the stuff that is requested, but we need to know, you know, if you're giving setbacks, you need to know where the lines are, at least to have something other than guesswork to establish it.
And when it comes time to selling your property, at some point in the future, if someone is doing their due diligence and asks, hey, you know, how, can you, show me, show me that everything here is where it's supposed to be, then, you know, this, this would be information from a surveyor that you would be able to present, and that would certainly remove any questions about that particular issue.
Aside from the variance, will I be able to move forward with a building permit as for the rest of the project?
Well, if you, if you're requesting a building permit for anything having to do with the inside or the main structure, that's fine. But anything having to do with these additions, including pouring footings, pouring slabs, you can't, you can't do any of that yet.
Okay.
But just, just submit, submit a building permit application to Mark Test here. It just can't include, you know, any of the additions. That'll have to come at a later date. And you can ask him about, you know, the best way to address that, if you can apply for it now, but it wouldn't be issued for those particular items, you know, as far as the additions are concerned, or just, seems like it would be easier just to submit a separate application after, after the zoning board decision is made.
So we'll get this surveyed and come back next month.
Okay. Great, thanks, David.
Thank you.
We need a motion to continue the application?
A motion to continue till the next meeting?
Second.
Denise and Len?
Yeah, hold on, just a second.
So Denise and Len have made a motion to continue the application to the meeting for the month of August. We're going to take a roll call vote. Sandra?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Len?
Yes.
And I say yes as well. So the, the meeting will be August, wait a minute. What's the date in August? Does anybody got a calendar handy?
Don, I have my.
Handle myself.
Ordinance, hold on just a sec. Let's see, August.
August 4th.
The 4th, August 4th? Okay, so the, this application will be continued to August 4th, 2020. And this is considered notice to any abutters or interested parties who might otherwise get notice so that the applicant doesn't have to pay for the fees again.
Time, location?
And the meeting will be, well, it will be, the meeting will be here at Town Hall, 16 Main Street in Glovestown, presuming it may well still be partially remote, I don't know.
Yes.
So that part's yet to be determined.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. You too.
Now, do we have any other info, Nancy? I don't have any correspondence, except we do have the Town and Country magazine if somebody's interested in looking at it.
Are we in it?
I don't know. I don't, I didn't look at it.
Hold on a minute. I just had to change my password yesterday, so I have to think about it.
Oh, this is from NHMA? Yes.
Yes.
Unis, uh, well, Unisipal Association. Do you want to look at it?
Yeah, I'll take a look at it.
Okay, and if we have no correspondence, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
And Sandra, we made a motion to adjourn?
I will second it, or I will just give my yes to it.
Okay, because we have, we have the motion, we have the second. Okay, and Denise? Yes. Len?
Yes.
And I say yes. The meeting is adjourned at 8:35. Thank you.